December 12, 2024. This is the regular meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. This is serving as November and December's meeting because of the holidays. My name is Jeffrey Leclair. I'm the chair of this board. The board consists of up to seven members of Rockport Town Resident and Volunteers, appointed by the Select Board to review land use applications, changes to zoning, and other duties prescribed in the ordinances of the town. We do have a quorum tonight, seeing five members here today, so I'm calling this meeting to order today at 5:32. So tonight's agenda is three items. To approve the minutes from September's meeting, to review minor subdivision revision for map 31 lot 5 and any other business. We welcome the public's attendance at this meeting. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak on any agenda item or any other business, I would ask they approach the microphone and identify themselves and their place of residence and limit to their comments to three minutes. And with that, let's go. Are there any comments on non-agenda items from the public that we have now? Hearing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Agenda item one is to approve the minutes from September meeting. So there were, let's see, Rob, myself, Sam, and Jan were there, so we have enough people to vote on it. Tom was absent. Were there any comments on that meeting minutes in the document?
No.
Sam?
Nothing.
Okay, I had just one correction, and I think Tom had a few corrections, which you're welcome.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the September planning board meeting?
I move we approve the minutes of the September board meeting.
Thank you, Jan. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Sam. All those in favor of approving the minutes from September meeting? Thank you. Four, zero. One abstention. A second agenda item is a final minor subdivision amendment for a parcel located at 146 Camden Street, Rockport, Maine, within the Sexton subdivision. This parcel is identified as map 31 lot 5, which is owned by Joyce Moore. This application is being represented by Jim Dorsky, Gartley and Dorsky, engineering and surveying. Does anyone on the board wish to identify conflict of interest that prevent them from rendering a fair judgment on this application? Hearing none, and let's proceed. Are there any comments from the public in regard to this subdivision application? No, then I'll close the public comments. So first of all, there's a change in the ordinance for subdivision reviews from the last time I think we reviewed one, and reviewing for completeness is actually Orion's duty. So have you reviewed this for completeness? I assume you have since it's crossed your desk.
Yeah, so review for completeness on the quantitative component. So given that this is a revision, there's like some ambiguity into what a complete application is. So based upon my understanding of Article 9 of revision to a subdivision in the subdivision ordinance, I believe this to be a complete application, ready for review by the planning board.
Okay, your interpretation was that it was complete based on Article 9?
Correct.
To be clear. Okay, so it's been a while actually for me that we've gone through a subdivision review. I don't know if other members of the board feel the same way. I know Tom's probably gone through a fair number of them. Where that sort of split in the road happens between a preliminary application, a minor and major, and then a final application, there seem to be different paths that we need to go down in order to review it. As for an amendment that gives us another layer at which we should be looking at it, which is probably less intense, if that's what we determine it to be. I went through the entire document, the entire subdivision ordinance, and I had questions as to whether this was a revision to the previous revision, or if it was a revision to the first subdivision plan. I think Jan may have had similar questions, and I would appreciate the help of others, perhaps Tom, perhaps Orion, in making that determination, and how you made that determination, and how Jim, how you approached it in that way, since you probably have more experience with the ordinance than most of us up here do.
Well, yeah, so I'm Jim Dorsky from Gartley and Dorsky, representing Joyce Moore and her application for the third amendment of the Sexton subdivision, which was originally approved in the 70s as a five lot subdivision. So I have done a few amendments in Rockport under this section of ordinance. And I, so there was the one little bit of ambiguity that we did have, and I discussed this with Scott and Orion, about the question of whether or not this would have to go back to preliminary because it, is it creating additional lots? That's, that was like the one main question for me. Because if it's creating additional lots, basically you're required to go back to preliminary. If you're not creating lots, you can just do, go to final. It's a simple, much simpler process. And so when I discussed that with Scott and Orion, given the fact that this was originally five lots, and then was amended down to two, and then it was made three, and now we're talking about doing just a simple split of one of the lots, there's no infrastructure proposed, no new development. It's really just, you know, when it says in Article 9 that the scope of review is limited to what's changing and the impact of those changes, and all that's happening is one lot that's 1.96 acres in size is getting split into two, where the minimum lot size is only 10,000 square feet. There's no new development proposed. And the fact that this was originally a five lot subdivision, and it's still going to be, even if this is approved, only four, we felt like it was appropriate to review it, you know, as a final plan review.
So I guess that's where I'd like to hear from the board. You've had a moment to look at that and scratch your head over where it starts. Go ahead, Jan.
For me, I just stopped reading when I read that if you add a lot, you have to go back to the original processing, and that's where I, that's where I am. That seems to me to be very clearly written, and I know that it's a fairly simple thing to draw another line, but nonetheless, that's how it's written. But at a minimum, I would like to go back to the land use ordinance of, that it was approved under, which is the 2022 amendment, to look for line by line, basically, to see if there is a change in the land use ordinance as, as it is written now, as opposed to how it was written when that lot, when that amendment was signed. That is, has anything happened in the land use ordinance that would give us pause to continue this, because we've made changes in it in the last couple of years? Because you're now coming under a different land use ordinance, a different amendment. So I would want to know what's happened to the land use ordinance that might affect this, and I'm also curious as to why you think that the article is not clearly saying, if you add a lot, you must start the process over. That seems as plain English as it could be.
I guess what's not entirely plain to me, and how I would argue that it is a little bit gray, is that this subdivision was originally five lots.
I don't care.
And after this, there would be four. And I'd also say that because the article clearly says that the scope of review is in relation to what's changing and the impacts of that, what's changing is we're taking a lot that's almost two acres, and we're splitting it into two lots. And so the impacts of that, to me, it's a review of the zoning requirements with regard to those two lots, and do they meet the zoning requirements? To me, it's as simple as that.
There will be a new access point to the, to the?
No, there will not.
How will someone get to that lot?
If you look at the plan, you'll see there are already?
Through the shared driveway from the commercial site.
There, there are three different buildings on this property. What will end up being called Lot 3 has a building that is already accessed from Route 1, and that's not changing. The two buildings that are, have access from Camden Street will continue to have access from changing Camden Street. That's not changing. The access isn't changing. The utilities aren't changing. Nothing's changing, except it's going to be two lots instead of one, and those two lots meet the zoning requirements.
The property that is now the dog park, is that, that is included in this three-point, whatever number of acres or not?
It's a lot in the subdivision, but it's not part of what's changing. It has nothing to do with this amendment.
Any thoughts from board members on this point? Whether this is a revision?
It's my confusion. I'd like Orion's opinion on this, or somebody who knows more than I do, which is virtually everybody in the room.
Well, as I said, I went back and forth on it. Because when something is a revision to the first instance, then everything that happens after that is essentially a generational change after the genesis. So each is a revision upon itself, but a revision to the original. So that's where I struggled to understand whether this is an amendment to just the one that preceded it, or going all the way back to the original subdivision plan. And that's, that's where I struggled. And where I thought of it starting to make sense was if you had a subdivision, you divided it into five lots, but for some reason, and you were selling off these lots, and for some reason you sold off two of them, and somebody said, I want the other three lots as one lot. So you never really broke it up, and you left it like that. And then you said, okay, we're actually going to make that bigger lot into four by putting a line down the middle. But wait a minute, let's put the line somewhere else. It's not as though that went from five to three to four. It's, it's just the same, it's the same area. It's not like this is, the subdivision's grown. It's not acquired any more land that would then cause it to take on things that haven't been seen before. And I don't think that, and I do understand that the increase of lots would have an effect that hadn't been considered before, but this is really a decrease from the original. I'm not entirely confident in that reading, but I'm not entirely confident in your reading either, so I?
And neither am I. I'm wondering whether, if, if Article 9 should be a little bit more specific than?
I'd love it to be.
Are we wording a one line or two lines?
Right.
As to whether or not this is about contiguous property or additional, additional size?
Right.
Of property? Because I, it seems crazy to me to object to, somebody owns this property, and where they wish to draw their lines ought to really not concern me, as long as all the lots meet the rest of specifications, which they appear to do. So I'm just curious about how it was written, and maybe we need to, you know, having just gone through the, the rest of the L U O, maybe we need to go through the subdivision part, you know, spirit of time.
There should be some, I mean, I guess it never increased in size before. It went from five to, was it four to?
It went from five to two. So the animal hospital is lot five, and that's never changed.
Right.
The First Amendment took all the other four lots and merged them into one. And then we took that one lot and split it in two. So the dog park was on one, and then there was the remainder, and that's where it is today. And so we're trying to take this remainder and just split it into two.
Okay, Orion, any thoughts in, from your office of?
Sure. Yeah, so I'm, I still agree that it's not a creation of an additional lot because of the original review of it being five lots. I still believe that the split isn't going to be a big impact. I'm, I guess if I were to support, I would support the simpler review of it just being a lot split. Because it's already built out. They're not going to add, well, they, they have the ability to in the land use ordinance, but to Jan, to your point of what the previous land use ordinance has, it's not, it would still conform to that land use ordinance, given the zone, by my recollection of the land use ordinance at that time. Its lot coverage isn't anywhere near what that land use ordinance was set at at the previous time, and it definitely has the ability under the current land use ordinance. But with it currently being used, what is, what is lot three being used as right now?
Uh, there's a dog.
There's a dog, yeah. So the likelihood of a residential structure going there is a design. You know, the use component isn't really what we're looking at here. It's really just a lot split. So if it was even a vacant, no build, and they went from five to three to four, it would still be the same consideration here. But access has changed.
Let me ask a question there. One thing that caught my attention was whether or not the lots have sufficient, whether the sewer treatment plant has sufficient capability to handle their waste. That's something that has to be sworn to by the sewer treatment people. Would that, if they decide, right now, I guess, if there, I don't know if there are plans to build on this lot or not, but at what point, if they decide all of a sudden to build four lots worth of buildings, when the, when the plans come in for the building, is when we would talk about whether there was adequate, whether the sewage could handle it?
Correct.
Okay.
So right, right now, there's not going to be any?
Well, right now, there's nothing. So, yeah, I'm just curious about the future.
And the two lots that are the subject of this amendment, they're already developed. The other lot, like the word of dog park is, I actually think there's about 100%.
Certain of this, but I think there's a deed restriction on it.
I would, I was, that was another question that I had, was whether?
So I'm not sure that could ever be developed either.
Right, right, okay.
So I don't, I don't, I mean, you never know what could happen in the future, but I just, there's no, I mean, right now, this application, what's going on, what's being asked to happen, there's no development proposed. That's not part of this amendment. It's just the division of the land.
Yeah.
Did we receive any feedback from the abutters?
No, no. So something abutter, notice, and they actually got two letters because I made a mistake on a date, so I know they know about this. But nobody contacted and concerned, or nobody even called to ask a question.
And does the owner of lot five know about this as well? I didn't see them as in a butter, but I know they were part of the subdivision. Is that, were they contacted about this?
I didn't get a letter from my office because they're not a subdivision of butter, but if you can answer that.
I know that Joyce communicates with them, so I assume they know. I don't know for sure.
To answer your question, no, they were not notified by my office because they're not in a butter to the subdivision.
Because they're still inside the subdivision.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm obviously coming into this as, as green as anybody, but reading through all the stuff that I can get my hands on and kind of hearing what we've talked about, especially listening to what Jim had to say. I mean, I think the, the intent of that part where it said, when you add lots, has to do with whether or not the original piece was set up for five, and all of a sudden we want to make it 20 with the same amount of space? Or we added space that was one big lot in the back, and now we want to start carving pieces into that and bring it in? The fact that this is already developed, already an operating business, and then obviously we don't know intent behind it, but seemingly separating the two business structures from each other with separate lots can make a lot of sense for a lot of different reasons. Again, having it be all developed, having them all, having coexisted for so long, I really look at this one more as a review of an amendment to that original, a five unit, or five unit subdivision, because again, you're still underneath that piece, and it's not, I think honestly, I would look at it slightly different if the three quarters of an acre piece was undeveloped. And really, it was like, that would be kind of like looking at, all right, we're adding a lot that wasn't really there as something, where in this case, very much an established business with all of its utilities and places already there. So I think in this case, you look at it much more, I look at it much more like a review and just do the simple piece off of the original subdivision.
Okay.
So is anyone uncomfortable with us proceeding with this as an amendment to previously approved subdivision plan? Because I think that's the first thing we need to decide, is that the track we're going to take?
Yes.
Rob?
Yeah, I don't see why we wouldn't, to be honest.
We don't have to take a vote on it, but I just want to make sure that no one's uncomfortable that we proceed if they don't want to.
I have a kind of a documentation question. The reference document for subdivisions in our, in our SharePoint says 2010. Is that, is that the up-to-date version? Because I have one that says 2022.
2022 is the most up-to-date.
In the reference?
2022 is the most up-to-date.
Does that, is that the copy that we have under reference?
In the application? Reference where? In SharePoint? Are you talking about the subdivision ordinance in SharePoint? Yes. I'll have to look at that, and if maybe I will update it.
I think that the, getting a little bit into the substance of what's being proposed here, it's already been touched on a little bit, is that there, there are very few changes that are happening, other than an imaginary line being drawn.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking. If you walked out there after the amendment before, it's not going to be any different.
I mean, can we even ask, like, what, what is the owner planning on doing the subdividing of this lot for? Like?
I don't know if she plans to convey one of them and keep one, or?
I was wondering if we could ask, if we could ask a question like that. I don't think, I don't think we're really entitled, because whatever happens has to come before the board to happen. I don't know that we could really ask why they're doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, same thing earlier, and I was just kind of dancing on that side of it.
Can we ask that?
There are things that would benefit, you know, by, by the split, but like, what they are, I think doesn't enter into our decision as to?
Right, I'd imagine it's up to whoever's doing it to be forthcoming with that, but they also don't need to.
Yeah.
We had that one that was the neighbors, this was a couple of months ago. They told us, but I'm sure they didn't need to tell us.
Yeah, no, exactly. If it's freely given, fine. I don't think we can hold up a decision based off of waiting for an answer.
Nor can we decide based on what?
Yeah, what the answer is.
Right, yeah.
Exactly.
Not doing anything.
Right, all right. So I think we've decided on the method.
Yeah.
Now we're looking at the?
Now we're looking at the ordinance. I don't seem to have internet, so I can't pull up the ordinance myself to walk through it. The, I don't know. Is the Wi-Fi called Tor Public?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll try it again.
All right.
Still's up? Still don't have internet?
It'll probably work, I'll just try it again.
Okay, T R.
Yeah, no password.
No.
Why, no password? Let's see. Can I help you? So we would be using, this is a minor subdivision, is that correct?
Correct.
So subdivision, minor, any subdivision containing four lots or dwelling units or less? Okay, so subdivision, minor, goes to Article 6, looking at the submissions in 6.3. Okay, the final plan consists of an application form, and these have all been determined to be complete, a location map, a final plan, and then further requirements for submission, which are the most detailed portion. So would it be usual for us to go through these piece by piece?
Well, so with this being a revision, so we just focus on what's changing. The only thing that's changing is just this lot split, so.
Okay, so the lot split, does it comply with the land use ordinance for?
Right.
Lot coverage, lot size?
So in the list that I've made for, if y'all did decide that Article 9, that this was just to focus on lot split only, it's not going to change or be in addition, then a decision to make on Article 9, a formal motion to accept this however y'all decided. And then a decision on the number of lots for a major or minor, whether it's a major or minor. A decision on meeting requirements applicable in subdivision ordinance, so if there's certain items that need to be covered within the subdivision ordinance, which with this, I can see a simple, do we accept it as proposed? And then it's finished, but y'all can go into depth on certain items if you feel inappropriate. And then that would conclude my opinion of what's needed for subdivision ordinance, and then a determination in the land use ordinance on zoning and lot size based on the 918 dimensional table. And then anything else you want to talk about there, but for the most part, that's it.
Okay, since we already basically covered that first one, Article 9, determination that this is a amendment to previously approved subdivision plan, then let's have a motion. Would anyone like to prepare a motion that we review this application under the terms of Article 9 as a revision to an approved plan?
Without the creation of an additional lot.
Without the creation of additional lot.
So moved.
Sam, thank you. Jan, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero. Okay, thank you. Moving on, we should make a determination, as Orion suggests, that this is indeed a subdivision minor. As I pointed out on page 36, the definition of subdivision minor is any subdivision containing four lots or dwelling units or less. Would anyone like to make a motion that this application represents a subdivision that is classified as a minor subdivision?
I'll move that.
Jan, thank you. Second?
Second.
Sam? Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay, and looking at the changes, and I think, Jim, you could probably help us with this, and I know we said it before, but what sorts of substantive changes, if we were to lay this plan over the previously approved plan, for instance, would we see apart from the line that goes across it differently?
Yeah, that's really the only change.
That's the only change? Well, your work was easy for this.
So what's, so the whole subdivision is, you know, the Contay, Contayco's property, that's labeled lot five, always has been. You know, after the last amendment, what's labeled as lot one, the paw animal, animal adoptions center, that's the dog park, that's part of the subdivision. And then everything outlined in bold, or running up to, close to, but not all the way to the tadline, that's the remainder of the subdivision. And right now, everything within the bold property lines, labeled as lot two and lot three, 1.2 acres and 1.76 acres respectively, that, right now, in the most recently amended plan, is lot two. And so the only thing that's changing is that line running through that lot, breaking it into two parts. The line that's got the, it's heavy, but it's a double dash. We did keep it, you'll see there's a dimension of 15.7 feet off of a wood retaining wall that's on lot three. That 15.7 foot dimension is there because there's a 15-foot side setback from structures, and that could be considered a structure. There's also an eight-foot setback for driveways and parking, so we've got that nine-foot dimension showing that we're meeting that setback from the corner of the parking lot. Like I said, it, I did look at the dimensional, 918 dimensional table, we're in 907. There's a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, which is less than a quarter of an acre. Lot three is the smaller lot at over three quarters of an acre. Street frontage, 60 feet minimum on Camden Street, we've got 172. It's 100 feet on Route 1, we've got just over 100. Those were the key things that this division could have affected. And it meets those.
And then you, excuse me, you showed more information on this plan, such as utility lines?
Yeah, Scott asked us to show her. Yeah, Scott asked us to show where all the utilities were, so we've done that.
I mean, not that there's any requirement that utilities follow a property division line.
No.
Okay.
And so all the parking areas, buildings, structures on this already exist?
That's true, yes.
Right, or?
And I guess that is something that's happened since the last amendment. There is a new building near Camden Street and parking in a building down below. I can't remember if that building was there below or contemplated, but but yeah, everything on here, it exists. There's nothing proposed.
Yeah, that building was built in the past year or so, a year or two. In terms of the setbacks, you you talked about setbacks to driveways, setbacks to structures. I believe there are more restrictive and less restrictive setbacks depending on the use of the structure. I don't know if that's true or not, but in that case, would you use a more restrictive?
I don't think there are any of those that in this zone that would be affected by the location of this property line we're proposing.
Okay.
So the way I look at this is, you know, it's, the review is what's changing, which is this new property line. And I know that this line, and I reviewed it all with Scott a couple of times.
Yeah.
Meets all the zoning requirements.
Flip to the table. These all are on town water and town sewer.
Correct.
So they're not adding any sewer capacity or?
Right.
Would not be needed. There's no flood zone, there's no earthwork that's changed.
Right.
That would cause drainage patterns to have moved. Okay, does anyone else have any characteristics of the subdivision ordinance that they'd like to highlight in terms of this this lot?
I was gonna say, the only thing I had concern around was making sure that the Route One frontage was, there was enough of it there, but when you go all the way back to the original, there was a hundred feet between lot five and the other lot there, so it's it's there all the way through. They just had to make, like you said, he had to angle his line accordingly to make sure he hit the corner right out the nose, but.
Yeah, we didn't take anything away from that frontage because there's only fourteen hundredths of a foot over the minimum.
Right, exactly. So, you know, that was my my part is just, you know, could you actually hit those dimensions with what over there? And like you said, he, you know, went after those setbacks for even something, you know, could be a structure even though it's a wall. So I think it's it's fairly safe around all those things. It looks like a pretty good plan.
Just curious, is that, is the the northerly line of the lot a disputed boundary between Camden and Rockport? Is or is it just that there's a slight error in the in the lot line?
The property line just wasn't placed on the?
On the on the town?
On the town line. The town line was created in eighteen ninety-one and it goes from that granite monument on Camden Street up to a copper bolt on the top of Ragged Mountain. I walked up there. With my GPS and located it way back. I think it was for a debt, well, it was for a prior job when we were working on the Camden side of the line. So, yeah.
That's interesting.
Does the town of Rockport own that sliver between the this line and Camden?
No, the Anne Keefe Living Trust.
But is it, that's within the town of Rockport, so?
Right, she, that trust owns land that goes all the way over this property line, the town line just happens to go through their property.
They should be assessed some property tax.
No, I'm I'm sure we get the fourteen cents.
Yeah.
Alright.
So my question was if anyone had anything else they'd they'd like to to raise about this?
No, but I I just think that the line that I that brought me in here tonight needs to be rethought. At some point, we need to look at this ordinance and bring it up a little bit to the, to more legible standards. And it should certainly, I think we should state that in a situation where there is more than one amendment, that everything refers back to the original.
Mm-hmm. If that's what?
If that's what we want.
If that's what we want.
If that's what we want.
I mean, if we went back to nineteen seventy-seven, I don't even, if there was a subdivision ordinance in nineteen seventy-seven?
There should have been. The statute started in seventy-one. That's what towns were required to start having subdivision review.
Yeah, but we're not going to hold everything from then on to that standard, whatever that ordinance said.
No, 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 no.
Right. Okay, so hearing that no one has any other concerns with this, can we have a motion to proceed and say that the, let's see, how do I phrase this? Does anyone want to offer a phraseology to to? Under section six, is it six hundred? Let me get this right. Article six, article six, minor subdivision, that this meets the requirements of article six, the minor subdivision. Anyone want to offer that kind of motion?
I move that the the plan as produced, as discussed tonight, meets the requirements of article six for minor subdivision.
Thank you, Jan. Is second?
Second.
Sam, thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? Voting all in favor? Z four five. Thank you.
This now, this now has to go before the voters at some point?
Well, I think we should just one one more thing which Orion suggested, which is just to check the table in the land use ordinance.
Right.
Positive it meets it, but?
I need I need one more that says the subdivision ordinance as a whole is satisfactory, and then, yeah, do that.
Okay, should we do that first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So to that effect, can we have a motion on the table to say that the subdivision application for map, map thirty-one lot five meets the requirements for the subdivision ordinance in the town of Rockport?
So moved.
Thanks, Sam. I have a second.
Second.
Secondly, Ron. All the, any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Okay, now to the land use ordinance, table nine eighteen. Orion, can you pull that up? I don't have access to that document for some reason. So what we have is a point seven six acre lot and a one point two acre lot. Thanks, Tom. And we are in?
Which table are we in?
Are we in nine oh one?
Nine oh seven.
Nine oh seven. Okay, so the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet with sewer or without public sewer and ten thousand square feet, and they're both on public sewer. So ten thousand square feet, it's a quarter acre or less, so these both, I would say, satisfy it. Lot coverage. Did these drawings quantify lot coverage, Jim?
We didn't do it because?
No, that that is unneeded for this review.
It's not needed for this review?
It's not close.
Okay.
All they, you'll need to do is make a determination.
Just to make a determination, it's got the, it's got the frontage and the the lot size.
Yes.
Okay. So moving down to frontage.
And sorry, so anything beyond that would just be, was it like Scott and Andrew at this one?
Correct.
Sorry.
So then frontage is a hundred feet on each of the roads. On Route One, it's a hundred feet and no frontage requirements on other roads. Which I think we've determined. Oh, sixty, you're right.
Camden Street.
Sixty on other roads, yep.
Yep. And then like you said, we had the setbacks for parking, setbacks for structure. All those.
Yeah, we can't create a non-conforming?
Yep.
Lot.
Exactly.
Is that true for lot coverage? I'm just rethinking this, Orion. If we were to, just in theory, not for this this application, but if a lot was developed and you were to subdivide it, whereas it previously was like all forests on one side and all parking lot on the other, and you split it so that it was like a hundred percent lot coverage for one and zero for the other, wouldn't you be creating a non-conforming condition?
I guess under that interpretation, yeah, you would.
Yeah.
I was looking at it more of just this being a lot split component, but I see your point on that, but I highly doubt this is.
I don't think, I I think reasonably it's not approaching.
No.
I I agree with you. I I would not create a lot that created?
A non-conforming lot coverage condition?
Right.
And I'm confident that this doesn't, but, so.
I think we can?
It's something we should look at, but we looked at it and this is not it, so.
Yes, okay. I think we should, we should come to that conclusion as a board for lot coverage as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we've looked at them. Does anyone have any further comments on table nine eighteen in terms of quantifying the lots? Okay, then can we have a motion that the application for the subdivision of, what was it again, map thirty-one lot five meets the requirements for table nine eighteen in the land use ordinance?
I move.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
By Jan. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, anything else that you need from us, Orion?
Probably just the final approval motion that you approve this application as presented.
Okay.
And then that should satisfy everything.
Okay, would anyone like to make that motion?
I move that the application as presented be accepted.
Second.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you, Sam. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Who who motioned? Jan motioned?
Jan motioned, Sam seconded. He moved, that's right. He moved.
I did motion.
No, he made a motion.
Yes.
Signature.
Any other?
We can all sign it right now.
Yeah.
You don't have to make a trip to the town office.
Figure out who signed which copy.
Almost. The last item of business is any other business, excuse me. I just wanted to point out we still have a vacancy on the board. We have six members and one alternate. We could have seven. The next meeting date will be in January on the twenty-third, which would be a normally scheduled meeting date, the fourth Thursday of the month. I trust that you can all look at your calendars and make sure that works for you. Anyone else want to raise anything for the board to discuss?
I saw a meeting reserved for the twenty-sixth of December on the town calendar.
That sounds good. Not for us.
Is that?
It's gonna be a lonely meeting.
Yeah. I know we had, we had combined the November and December meetings for this meeting.
It will be deleted.
Okay.
I will delete the one on December twenty-sixth.
Right on.
Five thirty, planning.
Yep. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion that we adjourn.
Sam moved that we adjourn. Do we have a second?
I have a second, yes.
Jan, thank you. All those in favor of adjournment? Okay, I call this meeting adjourned at six sixteen P M. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.